Cool. I mean, like, there's like eight containers, but that makes some really nasty stuff.
Call order of the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. Do we have a roll call, Janet?
Sure. Chair John Dynan.
Here.
Vice Chair Robert Ball.
Here.
Commissioner Joan Stewart.
Here.
And to make note, Commissioner Melissa Hughes is absent. Commissioner Mallory Fenrich.
Here.
And Steve Link, our alternate, is absent.
We have a quorum though, right?
Yep.
Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Hearing none. Move on to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence, and please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. Do we have any public comments at this time? Hearing none. Move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Any Planning Commission members wish to pull a comment on item?
Move through.
You're a second.
A second.
Janet, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
That is approved for.
Thank you, Janet. Item 3.1, Lucky House LLC, CUP 02-2019. Request for CUP 02-2019, parent license type 41, on sale, general eating place, closed parent, to serve alcohol, beer and wine at the newly remodeled Lucky House Restaurant. Property is located at 2730 Patterson Road, APN 075-010-062. Donna, will you make the presentation?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, and welcome back after a long summer. Okay, as stated, this is the Lucky House Conditional Use Permit 02-2019. Also, as stated, Lucky House is at 2730 Patterson Road, and they are requesting the ABC Type 41 license for a full-service restaurant. I can tell you that staff has been working with the owners of Lucky House for the past, I guess it'd be about two years. I think some of you were on the commission when they had a complete teardown and new building approved, but with bank loans and bonds and things like that, they weren't able to move forward at that project. Now they've done a complete interior remodel, and they're looking to open in September, and they're very excited about welcoming the public back. So their remodel includes new ADA compliant restrooms, a new kitchen, new walk-in freezers, a resurfaced parking lot, new landscape areas, and new paint and trim. There's an aerial view. That's Patterson Road in front. Off to the upper right, you can see where it starts to curve off towards the waterfall. And it is the building with the yellow pin in it. Here's the frontage of the house. This is an old photo. Currently, some of the pavement's kind of torn up. They're putting in some landscape boxes and redoing the surface as well as repainting the parking spaces. And they will have a safe path of travel that goes from the door to the public sidewalk. As you can see, it is yellow and red, and now the new building, the rehab building, is very bright yellow and red, attracting a lot of attention on social media, which is a good thing. Here is the floor plan of the building. As you can see, there are tables and chairs off to the right side of this plan. They'll be able to seat 40 people at one time, and the boxes that you see there are actually areas that they're kind of dotted boxes there, there for the ADA customers. They'll be able to move a chair aside and bring wheelchairs right up to the table. So the municipal code states that any use permit, even one for alcohol, the applicant must introduce evidence in support of their application sufficient enough for you to find that they won't be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the city. So their evidence is that this operation has been, or this restaurant has been in operation with these owners since 2004, so they're established members of our community. There have been no calls for police services, or there have been no code enforcement cases opened or closed against them. The owners have invested time and money into creating a friendly and positive dining experience for the Riverbank citizens. They will also have all their staff go through training through ABC in order to, you know, be able to, you know, talk to patrons who've maybe had a drink too many, or, you know, how not to serve that extra drink and how not to serve minors. So there will be intensive training with the staff. And the owners wish to enhance your dining experience by adding the beer and wine to the menu so that people could have a sip of wine while they're waiting for their food to show up. So it's recommended that the applicant has submitted, no, the recommendation is that you should determine that the applicant has submitted sufficient evidence for the Planning Commission to consider that the project is categorically exempt under CEQA and approve the conditional use permit pursuant to the findings and conditions in the resolution that we attached to your staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I had thought the applicants would be here. I just talked to them this week, so something must have come up.
Any questions, Donna?
No.
Any comments from the public? Entertain a motion to approve this recommendation.
Did you open and close public hearing?
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Any member of the public that wishes to speak? Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Once again, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call vote, Janet?
Chair Dynan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich.
Yes.
Okay, that passes through.
Thank you. Item four, Planning Commission Direction. Item 4.1, Downtown Murals. Donna, are you gonna handle this one as well?
I sure will.
Thank you.
So while we're getting the PowerPoint up, I'll go ahead with the summary. So the city has been in contact with, go ahead there, with a downtown business that is wishing to install a mural on the side of their building. A check of the downtown specific plan revealed that there is no process by which to review murals. Staff determined that previous murals and tile work throughout the city were created by an artist who was recruited without a formal process by the city. So this is the existing wall of the building. You can see some shade on it from this morning when I took that photo. And this is their proposed mural. So the mural is meant to be a reflection of the business within the building, Riverbank Wellness. It portrays a sanctuary of calm, quiet, healing, and learning. And they believe that this mural will attract people to their business, people that maybe don't want the high-energy atmosphere of flavors on the other side of town. So the downtown specific plan does contain some general principles and guidelines on how structures should look, but it doesn't really speak directly to murals. Some of these principles are that the building should appear welcoming and support pedestrians with facade design. That buildings should be distinctive and monotony should be avoided. And all visible building facades shall maintain a high degree of finish and articulation. Also, we should promote attractive and active streetscapes. And it does specifically speak to arts and culture, that we should expand the downtown's role as a regional destination for arts and culture. And that we should expand land uses that create arts awareness, like a visual arts gallery, fine art studios, art classes, performance studios. There's also a section on-site plan review. Most of it, as you can see, would pertain to the building itself, like building placement and layout. But at the bottom, the last sentence does seem like it could loosely apply to murals, where it says the design of proposed conditions affecting the visual appearance of the project and its surroundings. So while it doesn't talk about the paint of a building or a mural, it does say that the visual appearance is pretty important to the downtown. So some things to consider. What type of process should the city use to review murals? So we have the Architectural and Site Plan Review that speaks to buildings, and in this case, the piece, the Planning Commission, you are the ones who would make a decision on it. The downside of it is Architecture and Site Plan Review costs about $1,500. And for example, the mural that I showed you as an example was going to cost around $2,000. So it, our fees cost almost as much as the mural itself to paint. We could create an art commission or a review board and have specific fees for that. We could do staff review, like signs are reviewed. Or we could hold a workshop to discuss all of the above and how you feel about it. Or we could also say we shouldn't have any murals unless the city commissions them. I know quite a few, I want to say three years ago, John Anderson brought forth an item to the city council to protect murals. Some murals have been painted on private structures, and there was a desire by some folks in the community to protect those with, you know, some sort of legal document. So if somebody sells the building, the new owner would be required to keep that mural in good condition. But although it was presented to council, it didn't really go anywhere. The council didn't want to lay that type of a burden on a new property owner and possibly keep somebody from purchasing a building if they didn't want to be that involved with the murals. So that's kind of where we are with that. We don't have a lot of teeth to protect any murals that we would be, would or would not allow. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions and take direction from you on whether or not you'd like something brought back to you. I will be doing a similar presentation to the Planning Commission, or the city council, next week, and share any comments you may have with them and possibly get directions.
I would be in favor of a workshop because I know that some art can be a little controversial, and so I think that we should probably have some sort of a discussion to decide just exactly what we would like on the walls of our city.
Okay, okay. Did you prefer one over another? Were you leaning toward any, like, architectural review, or you just don't want to keep it open and?
I would like to have a workshop, and I would, I think I'd really be in favor of some sort of an art commission.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to have some kind of an approval process. But I know, I'm fond of the idea of the wall murals. I know when I go through cities, like we go through Hollister, they have the giant mural on the tanks. I just, every time I go by there, I just, I love it. I think it'd be really unique for our.
Yeah, and years ago, there was, there was a contest or something, and they were going to be painting murals on the water tank. And then that just kind of fell apart. Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
That's something you'd like to see too, the water tank?
Oh, heck yeah. Come in, I want to wait and see, you know, a big mural on there.
Yeah, I think murals are a great thing. I definitely want to see them here. I don't think they should go all the way to Planning Commission beside plan review, just for the price. But I do think there should be some oversight. I just want to know, do we have the manpower or capabilities to do, like an arts commission? I was just looking at a few different cities. I think you guys mentioned Ventura. I thought, I think murals should have a separate process, some sort of mural application, small fee. I like the idea of an arts commission, I suppose, if we have the manpower to do it. So we can have someone qualified to look at it. I don't want to, and I don't want to make it just one type of mural. I don't want to hinder creative expression in any way. Yeah, those are kind of my, my big thoughts about it. Yeah, no planning commission, arts commission if we can, or other, I'm, I think it would be okay to do it administratively if you guys feel comfortable reviewing art in that way. Yeah, I think that's kind of my, my basic thoughts about it.
You know, Donna, it's ironic. We're talking about this, and we're looking out the window at one of the prettiest parts of town, which is the mural across the park right there.
That's true.
I'm also in favor of a workshop, strongly in favor of a workshop, and I do lean towards an art commission concept for approval. I did a small inventory. Yes, that's a great mural over across the street. There's a nice one down the street over here. The one on Fourth Street is starting to crumble, so one of the things we would have to say is, who maintains the mural? What kind of standards? As an aside, someone, a friend of mine I was talking about, this subject said Mantica has got some great murals.
Yeah, we do.
So if there was some communication between staff perhaps and Mantica brought to this workshop, as far as the workshop goes, I envision it would be a workshop of this Planning Commission.
With the audience.
With the public, which I'm going to also request for this meeting, but yes, is everyone on that same page?
Yeah, I think so, to talk about it a little further, kind of nail our thoughts down.
If we could schedule a public meeting with that subject alone, murals.
Just do a separate workshop on murals?
Okay.
Excuse me.
I will open this up for public discussion. Hearing none, I will close it for public discussion. And I am making the attorney grin, so I guess that's a good thing.
Well, thank you very much. I will work on scheduling a workshop. Just one last question. I kind of asked in the staff report generally, I think Mallory said that she doesn't
Yeah.
care about content that.
All kinds, all kinds of murals, all kinds of art.
Okay. I just wondered if anybody else had a strong feeling of maybe it should relate historically to Riverbank, or it should relate to the business involved, or?
I had a.
Just some more fodder for the workshop.
It's more fodder, but I was thinking, for example, all of these relate to the culture of Riverbank, the existing ones. And if it was one individual, let's say, that was tasked with approving a mural, they might say the lady on the wall of the cannabis building is great. But the next person might say, well, we got a gun shop down here. They might want to show an AK-47 on the wall. So I see some sort of a, an art commission approval process being necessary.
Great. Thank you so much for your input. I really appreciate it, and I'll work on that for you.
Thank you.
I would like to see varying degrees, not, not just necessarily one. I think it's, part of the interest of coming into an area is the uniqueness of all the different ones. I think if we, they make it very consistent, halfway through the neighborhood, you're going to be like, huh, it's the same stuff.
Ah.
So I like the uniqueness, you know, it's, might not be a good thing that people are driving through, you know, driving through downtown, they're looking, they're craning their neck at all the artwork, but I think it would be more interesting to not restrict it to one specific genre.
Okay. I agree. You wouldn't really want to stifle any artistic expression, not if it's in a good case, and we have no fault with it.
And that's all stuff we can discuss in this workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Item 4.2, I've been waiting all night to say this, tiny houses. I think I've seen one or two episodes of that TV show that deals with them.
Yeah. So tonight, for your viewing pleasure, we have our new associate planner, Gabrielle Salazar, who will be presenting this item. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, nice to meet you, Planning Commission. So the item, as Donna mentioned, Janet, is the tiny houses. So I'm sure all of you have read, you know, with the city and the county and the state talking about a significant shortage in housing all over California. And because of this shortage, cities are asked and requested by the state to kind of think of creative ways to work to remediate and resolve and work to increase more housing production in the state. So two of the state requirements that set objectives and goals for housing production, one of them is the regional housing needs. Regional housing needs determination, and these are done per county. So the latest one is for January 1st, 2014, to September 30th, 2023. And for those about nine, almost 10 years, the city or the county is supposed to have a goal of 21,330 units. Additionally, as we know, there was a, in the, there was a recent article in the MSLB that noted that there had been 71 new housing units of low-income housing between 2017 and 2019 of April. And at the same time, there was over 40 market rate homes for that period. And then, like I mentioned, there's another state requirement incorporated within the general plan where it talks about the housing element. And in the housing element, the city is also supposed to indicate, you know, places or opportunities for possible housing. And for the 2005, 2025, 2005 to 2025 general plan, land use element, and estimate that there would be 10,700 new dwelling units by 2025 in the city of Riverbank. So far, we've had significant, we've had some housing, like I said, in the last couple of years with the new Crossroads West incorporation into the city. The city is expected and estimated to have 21,000 new residential dwelling units. Similarly, in the next few years, we're also anticipate to have 400 new residential housing units on the east side of the city. And combined with those two, the city is still, the city is still short and not meeting its housing production goals for the city, and then also as part of the county, even though I will say the city of Riverbank is one of the leaders in the county of the cities in Parrottmore Housing. So with that being said, tiny houses have become, as you've seen on Netflix and other TV shows, as possible opportunities for, for people who encourage or want to minimize the way they're living, or as creative ways to look for housing in communities. And people are attracted to them because of their size, their character, their use. It could be temporary, it could be long-term because they're easily able to move around with wheels and things of that sort, and because they're affordable. And some of the things that we looked at here and for this presentation tonight was like the types of tiny houses, the size, the placement, where it is that are the best areas for the placement of them, what purpose are they going to serve? Any process and fees, and if, also there's, we also note some ground opportunities for possible opportunities that the city could seek funds for, for this purpose. And then at the end, just asking for, for direction from the Planning Commission. So two of the popular types of tiny homes are those that have a permanent foundation, as you see on the right. There's also those that have wheels, as you can see on the left-hand side. In terms of the size, different communities and cities in the nation define them or characterize them differently. In Rockland, Florida, for example, there, the size ranges from 170 square feet. Um, in Rockland, Florida, for example, there, the, the size ranges from a hundred seventy square feet to seventeen hundred square feet. In Portland, um, they allow them more as accessory dwelling units, which is like the backyard or a second dwelling, dwelling unit in a home. And those are four hundred square feet of maximum. In Spur, Texas, they allow, uh, maximum square footage of nine hundred square feet. In Santa Rosa, um, they allow a junior accessory dwelling unit of five hundred square feet maximum. The International Residential Code, um, defines the tiny home maximum as four hundred square feet. Um, currently, the city's, uh, land use regulations indicate that, um, for a minimum dwelling unit in the city, you need at least nine hundred square feet of that, um, dwelling unit. Placement and zoning. So as, um, as you can see from the PowerPoint, for instance, like I mentioned earlier, Portland, Seattle, Los Angeles do allow, do allow tiny homes. But they allow them more as secondary to the primary dwelling unit. Um, as you know, in, in January first, twenty eighteen, the city became, or the state became a little more flexible and encouraged more, um, accessory dwelling units as an opportunity for people to, um, provide housing. Um, in Rockledge, Florida, um, they allow them as a standalone, kind of like little communities, where you have maybe like a cluster of of four or twelve of them within an area. Um, there, they allowed a cluster of twelve, but then there and within that area, only four of them could be on wheels. So those, those are kind of different examples of how some cities are allowing them and where exactly they're allowed to be placed. So the purpose, um, there's different purposes that they could be used for. It could be for temporary housing. Um, for homeless folks, it could be for, um, temporary housing for if there's construction going on in the primary dwelling unit. So here's some examples. In the county of El Paso, they allow them for, for, uh, up to twelve months. Um, there, for if, if the primary dwelling unit is undergoing construction. Um, also, the, the county of El Paso also allows them, um, permanently as, as well in agriculture and other residential zones in their city. I mean, sorry, in their county, of course. Uh, Detroit has used them kind of as, as a mechanism to, because they've experienced a lot of, um, blight or neglected communities in Detroit. So they're kind of as a way to resolve some of the housing issues that they face. Um, they're looking at, um, and working with, collaborating with nonprofits to have these, um, tiny house communities. And then, as we mentioned, Rockledge, Florida, which was the first city that kind of actually established and allowed for tiny houses. They allow them for permanent residential living. And then, um, like I said, there, they allow them coming in clusters, of course. And the Riverbank, um, we have to figure out if, if we are gonna proceed, if the direction is for staff to study this issue further, if it's gonna be for temporary purposes, if it's gonna be kind of as a permanent residential, residential living, um, purpose. Um, too, because maybe they're more affordable and accessible for, for people. It depends on, on which direction, um, the planning commission wants to move forward and, and, um, what they decide. Terms of process and fees, um, some of the things that we have to consider, and, and if we have a further discussion with more, more additional information, like a workshop, um, is for us staff to look at kind of the, the cost and fees and, and, and whether those fees are gonna be um, significant that they'll deter people from pursuing tiny homes? Or whether they're accessible, that people could wanna and encourage and actually apply for those kind of permits? So kinda some things that we use as some measures or comparables here in the city is accessory dwelling units, where, um, if you look at fees for people that have a, a secondary unit in their home, um, it's typically in the range of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, plus other agency fees, which these are, these are used um, for impact fees in terms of what resources, staffing, um, does it require like a sewer connection? Um, what kind of review is gonna be necessary for that? So those are kinda like the, the fees that cities currently has for accessory dwelling units. Um, another process that these could be maybe allowed is through maybe the architecture and site plan review. Um, currently, for multifamily projects, an application is, um, minimum sixteen hundred dollars for, um, applicants to apply for those. And of course, they need to be, um, permitted and, and approved by the planning commission. If, if fees may, if fees are over forty, forty thousand dollars, I mean, it may be difficult for, for folks and applicants that are interested in pursuing tiny homes to go in that direction. So like, like we said, that's kind of something we have to consider. The American Planners Association came out with the recent report on August fifth, where they provide, where they studied forty cities, and they looked at kind of, um, developing appropriate fee structures, kinda mechanisms, medicines that they could use based on those forty case, forty, um, ten case studies, and then forty cities that they looked at, and kinda looking at best practices. So that's definitely something that we can look at further if we wanna explore this issue, um, more in depth in terms of what are some, some, uh, comparables or items that we can look up and, um, develop, into developing a fee structure for the city of Riverbank, if, if that's the direction that is, um, that, that city, um, decides to go. Um, like we mentioned, there's a grant opportunities, uh, the state, um, with the Building and, and Jobs Act, established a twenty seventy, seventy-five dollar recording fee on real estate documents to increase affordable housing supply. Um, so it's, it's an application that's due at the end of November of this year, where the state will allow, um, if cities apply and get this, this funding, they'll receive technical assistance. And one of those technical assistance is in, um, in building and working on creative strategies and solutions to increase affordable housing supply. So it's kind of definitely one of the areas that we could work with, um, if we get that grant, um, with technical planners and agencies that can assist us with in developing more research, whether that mean more fees, or that being, figuring out which zoning is more appropriate. Um, looking at other areas that maybe we have to look at as well in terms of maybe, um, building code requirements, um, foundation types, cost, um, those kinds of things that are necessary, and, and be more comprehensive in, um, as we move forward and, and do more research on this, um, subject. So with that being said, uh, in terms of, uh, what's the, the next step that city staff should take? If it wants to consider, one, is it, does the planning commission wanna consider tiny houses as, as an option? Um, two, in terms also looking at, um, what size, what's the minimum, what's large that, the largest that the city is willing to consider for square footage wise? Is it the same as the threshold of ninety, nine hundred square feet for the minimum dwelling unit right now that's, that exists? Uh, what zones are most appropriate for it? Is it single-family zoning? Um, as a secondary unit, is it more, maybe more in the R three? Multifamily, uh, multi-density residential use? Is it in a planned development? Where you have maybe a planned development, or if you have a cluster of homes, of single family, or, or, sorry, tiny homes that could be in an area? Again, like we mentioned, uh, what's, what's the purpose? Is it for temporary living? Um, possibly for homeless folks? Is it permanent living? Is it for homes that just wanna have a secondary unit in, in, in their backyard? Is it, do we wanna see maybe a, a community on a vacant lot that could be maximized and used to its potential, best potential? Those are kinda different, uh, purposes or reasons that, um, tiny homes can, can exist and be used. And also too, what's the appropriate stat, uh, process? Is it, is it administratively with, um, with staff, over the counter? Is it a building permit? Would it be maybe through the architecture and site plan review process, where the planning, planning commission has an opportunity to look at them, review them? Um, look at, um, issues that are important, like architecture, uh, parking, um, location, those kinds of things. And then, in, in terms of the next step, um, if, if, if the planning commission decides that we should move forward, um, also getting direction in terms of we should apply for that planning, uh, a technical grant, um, that's available by the state. That could probably help us out and get some funding in terms of, of, of where we do more research on this subject matter. And kinda developed a, a game plan and something more comprehensive to, um, help out the planning commission make a decision, and then also the city council. And then also too, um, it could be maybe a, a recommendation for another workshop, um, on this issue further, so we can hear from the community, or it's completely up to the planning commission. I know Donna is, uh, presenting this, um, this item further at the next city council meeting next week to also receive, um, and include your comments for the city council as well. So that concludes my presentation. Just look forward to hear from your, your questions on, on tiny houses. So, thank you.
Any questions, Joe?
Oh, of course, I have. Now, you said, in Manteca, you have a few, is that what you said?
Um, right now, we just have accessory dwelling units. Uh, we're trying to figure out tiny homes ourselves.
In, in my mind, I was, I was trying to vision, envision this as you were speaking, I was thinking, well, could it be something like, like a mobile home park, only with all these little tiny houses there? And of course, we would have to think about all of the utilities and, and all of the, the city, um, requirements that would have to be met. But in, in my mind, that's what I was thinking. But you have like secondary structures on private, private residences?
Yeah, same as, um, here in Riverbank, the only way we can do it now is if it's an accessory dwelling unit, like a little granny unit in the backyard of someone's single-family home. That's really all we have set up right now.
And then I was thinking, some of them are on wheels, for people that actually wanna, like, treat them almost as a travel trailer, right? And then the permanent structures, it, it opens up all sorts of interesting possibilities, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, my question is, is where's the delineation between RVs and mobile homes?
Perfect.
My understanding from what I'm seeing is it, it could be anything. I mean, we can set that.
But it's almost like, uh, instead of a trailer park, we're gonna have a trailer neighborhood.
Right.
Or we could decide to, to not allow them with wheels, and then we'd have a differentiation, but
But yeah, but that, there's a, tiny home is kind of a word that was branded for TV shows. I mean, mobile homes are tiny home too. It's just not crafted
Sure.
Like on a TV show, but it's still virtually the same thing. So right now, what are, what are, what are the laws for mobile homes under the title of tiny home?
I think the, the biggest differences is, um, between the tiny homes and say, mobile homes, is the mobile homes are under state regulations. So if we were to have a new mobile home park in the city, and people bring in mobile homes, the state comes down and actually inspects those units and how they're hooked up to utilities and such, and the city is not even involved really in the building permit process except for foundations. Um, I do review, uh, mobile homes. Um, we wanna make sure that, you know, the front door, and some of them now have, uh, mobile homes have, um, little porches on the front, so they can face the street and be kind of like, you know, and fit in. So these would be, um, in fact, many of these mo-, uh, tiny homes, um, you can buy on Amazon for as little as five thousand dollars, or up to about six thousand dollars, depending on the model. Those would come to the city, they would be prefab, but the city would review the engineering plans that come with them, ensure that everything is constructed properly, so. Uh, it mostly that you're, you're looking at state review versus city review when it comes to those two types.
Cause I can see that becoming a thin line. I mean, if we're doing almost the same thing, if somebody's, you know, whether you're getting it on Amazon, or you're getting it online, cause you can get manufactured homes. So I just wonder, you know, I, I see someone making the argument, well, why can't I do the same thing with my toy hauler?
My understanding is that all of those questions are totally open at this point.
Right.
There are no answers. My question would be, can you apply for the grant to get some money to help us answer these questions, at the same time, we're trying to figure out answers to these questions?
That's exactly it, because the SB two funding is a technical planning, uh, planning grant. It doesn't allow us to buy them or to find land. It helps us through the process on how to amend our zoning code, what works for the city, what doesn't. It does a fee study. Um, these are things that we'll be able to ask for in the grant to help us through this process.
My recommendation would be to apply for the grant. I think that was one of your bullet points, that you
Yes.
Were asking us for direction.
Yeah, mine too.
Mister, uh, Robert, I mean, I think that's, that's an excellent question, because I think in the research that I did, some of the cities that we looked at had different standards for whether they were on wheels, or whether there was a permanent foundation. So like, like Donna said, if they're on wheels, they're more, there's, they must follow or comply with recreational vehicles, like permits and state standards, like Donna mentioned. And if they were a permanent foundation, it's kind of more similar to like a regular dwelling unit, and they comply with regular building code, um, and land use, um, requirements.
Yeah, and then Donna, how would that affect, if, if people are going to build one of these small homes, they're, they're going to want to build it on land that they own? So how would that affect our, our lot size here in the city? Well, that's a good point. There's, uh, as we move forward, or if we move forward and, and look at our zoning ordinance, um, for right now, there's a nine hundred square foot minimum for single-family residential lots, and maybe we keep that. So we deter people from putting a tiny house on a huge lot like that. Uh, maybe you need to cluster them. I think when staff started looking at tiny homes, it was in response to a challenge from the mayor on how do we deal with homelessness and help people? So one of the visions could be to have tiny houses on wheels that maybe you use for um, supplemental farm housing during the summertime. Then when the rains come, maybe you move them to another piece of property, and you could use them for homeless families. And so it could be dual, dual use. Um, we have some very large families, um, that ethnically or, um, nationality-wise like to live together, uh, several generations. Maybe a person could have a six thousand square foot lot and have four tiny houses on it, and have their whole family living there. The junior, um, ADUs that were mentioned earlier, um, I believe that was for Santa Rosa, um, they allow those to be put in with just the, the bedroom, basically, and no plumbing. You use it like a bedroom, and you come into the house and you interact with the rest of the family, then when it's bedtime, you just go outside to sleep. So it could help with some overcrowding issues as well. Um, there's a possibility we could just look at it only as an ADU. Instead of having an accessory dwelling unit in your backyard, maybe you have two, one for each set of your in-laws. Um, there, it does open up a lot of possibilities, and because you like tiny houses, doesn't mean we have to have them all here in the city, all the options. We can narrow it down to one or two and kinda see how it goes, and then expand over the years.
But wouldn't, for the, for the resident, this would be much more expensive for them than an apartment would be. But on the apartment side, we have to have a developer own and, or purchase and build an apartment complex.
I'm, I'm not sure what the question is.
Well, like, like, what I'm saying is though, is, is for someone to get into one of these, there's gonna be quite an expense and a timeframe to get into, and we're, cause we're talking about, um, housing, you know, l- l- uh, uh, lower affordable housing. The cost to, of, for someone to get into one of these, wouldn't that be much greater than renting an apartment? And, and couldn't we get, couldn't we establish more residential, or a larger residential footprint in an apartment complex than maybe sprawling these out?
I would say that the apartments would be much more expensive. I mean, right now, we are talking about expensive impact fees. But those can be reviewed and adjusted, you know, to fit the situation. Uh, so I think it could be a lot more economically done. If you had a lot with maybe twenty of these ten thousand dollar units, uh, to use for homelessness, um, I think the cost would come in a lot lower than if you built twenty units of apartments for them to live in, in transitional housing. Oh, so with that concept, then if we're thinking about homelessness, then they would not be purchasing these. These would just be available for the, for the homeless population? Right. For, you could maybe partner up with a nonprofit. Say you have a piece of property that gets donated, or the city purchases it, and maybe you buy ten of these ten thousand dollar houses, so that's your investment. And then you have a nonprofit that manages them and, and keeps them clean, and maybe there's a dumpster, you know, dumpster and, um, porta-potties, just, you know, to get the homelessness in for the winter.
But at this point, I think all options are open, correct?
Correct, correct.
One of the things this grant would help us, help to
Could help us narrow it down, yes.
There is a good example in the news, um, that's going around. Um, it's a veterans' housing program in
I heard that, yeah.
In the Midwest somewhere, but, um, it's a good example of a nonprofit, um, doing this, kind of putting a bunch of tiny houses on a tract of land. So, but, but I'm sure there's lots of examples, so.
Right, cause sometimes you have these like National Guard armories that have a lot of property around them, and so maybe it could be converted to use for veterans, a small section of it, it's a possibility.
Different group that, that needs housing, so.
Are there any other points of direction that you need at this point?
No, just open here, what, from, from the planning commission, what the direction is.
Yeah.
You have everything to bring to the city council?
Yes.
It's open.
I, yes, I took comments down, um.
I don't think at this point we need to schedule a workshop for tiny houses.
No, we just, um, we didn't feel the need to re- No, we just um we didn't feel need to restrict. To so look at everything to move forward with the grant and find out what will work for Riverbank.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public on tiny houses? Hearing none, close the public comment section.
Thank you, Gabrielle.
Moving on to item five, planning commission comments. Any comments from the planning commissioners?
Wait, I have I have I have a question. And and somebody asked me this question the other day, and I know that the state has softened the requirements because of the housing shortage. But I'm not, I'm not sure. Um so if somebody has a very large family home. And they're kind of empty nesters, is there a way that they can legally convert part of that home? Into an apartment in that same building?
Yes, it would be um an attached second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit. Uh when we talk about like these granny flats, they could be in your home, they could be attached to your home. And they could also be detached in your backyard.
Okay, and so tell me again the the legal term for this type of a thing?
An accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. At this point, we do have um an ordinance uh where we do allow people to have accessory dwelling ordinances. Or accessory dwellings in their yards and um it is currently at staff review.
Thank you.
My daughter and I were talking about that as I'm living alone and, you know, if I fall down, which I'm liable to do at any given time. So, yeah. Okay, uh we're still on planning commission comments. I attended uh two meetings, the town hall meeting with Congressman.
Harder?
Thank you, Josh Harder. I got a chance to speak with him for just a couple of minutes. He's aware of Crossroads West and he also brought up the Army plant. And what are we gonna be doing with the Army plant? So it was just good to know. And I also attended the uh time capsule ceremony last Saturday. And hopefully, we've got a new time capsule that will actually have something in it this time. And Councilman Uribe is in the audience. Councilman, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you for attending. And any county referral correspondence or information?
No.
Any staff comments?
Uh yes, I will uh share with you what happened at the last city council meeting. Uh well, the last one was actually canceled, but the one before that wasn't canceled. Uh the city council decided to allow the moratorium on cannabis dispensaries to expire. Uh therefore, we can take in new applications for dispensaries where we had had one on hold and I'm working to process that one right now. They have a development agreement draft that they're reviewing, and so you might see something in a month or two uh with that project. Uh I've had two other inquiries that didn't seem really serious. And then I uh did accept a business plan uh for a cannabis dispensary. And the city manager and I currently have that business plan under review. And we should probably determine um early next week whether or not they'll be invited to submit an application. Uh besides that item, uh let's see. We also um reviewed uh further electronic sign locations. At one point, it seemed like the council might be leaning towards the Del Rio location. But then after uh further consideration, um the uh. The Patterson calendar curve where the waterfall is uh was selected as a location. So staff is currently working with those uh sign folks in order to get them under contract, get them to. Apply for a building permit and then move forward to get a a nice um electronic sign there that will advertise. City events and uh hopefully some downtown and other businesses in town. And let's see. Okay, those are the only ones that I worked on, but I do know that um. There were other uh, you know, projects that were brought forward in uh oh, also the Dennis Moneroso map that was over there. On Claus and California, across the street from the high school. Um they did come in and get a final map from the city council and that property is being sold to Mark Wilbur. And Mark is just about finishing up the Diamond Bar West homes. So then he will move to uh the Moneroso site and build nine houses there. And then he's um also looking at a future senior project in the city. As well as trying to decide if he wants to move forward on countryside or Diamond Bar East. So there's still some things in the background kind of percolating and we should still be able to see some new houses in the next couple of years. Yeah, and uh I guess we adopted a feral cat ordinance too. Uh we uh we have been working with Oakdale Animal Services and so uh there are new rules and regulations in place. I guess you could say a new sheriff in town. And uh so hopefully the uh feral cats will get what they need and the the people that take care of them will be able to comply and. And we'll all be able to get along. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Right now, the next regular scheduled planning commission meeting is September seventeenth, twenty nineteen. And if there's no other business, meeting is adjourned.
Unless they cancel it.
Unless they cancel it. But they wouldn't do that, would they?
I didn't see you at that town hall meeting. I didn't see you.
I didn't see you.
Oh, well, there you go.
I'm in the pictures. All the pictures they took on the steps.
Oh, really?